All right. It's seven o'clock. We call the Ucires City Council meeting to order on January 18, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Breton, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to have a moment of silence for former Mayor Dan Ross, who passed away, and Council Candidate Chuck Stone. Roll call, please.
McKeever?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Wabow?
Here.
Potter?
Here.
Scher.
Spiegel?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Okay. We have the January 4, 2022, regular council minutes before you. Does anybody have any additions, corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You also have the January 11, 2022, special council meeting minutes before you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
That was the first one, sorry.
Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Granting permission for visitors to speak, as we have none, we'll keep moving. Do we have any communications or petitions?
I don't believe so.
No. All right. Standing committee reports. Mr. McKeever?
I do not have anything for today.
And Ms. Scher, I guess you're here. Mr. Myers?
None for health and safety, Madam President.
Mr. Wabow?
Yeah, I'd just like to, the minutes aren't approved yet from our meeting, but just for the people at home, wherever the camera is. If, a lot of people will watch, oh, okay. Just go over some things that we talked about Thursday that, because some of these people need recognition, like, well, I'll just go through it. So, we had our meeting for finance on Thursday, January 6th, at six, we started at six o'clock. It lasted a whole four minutes. And Mark, Kevin, Terry, and myself, Chair, were there. There was no public participation. We approved the minutes of December 9th. Joyce had requested some appropriations. One was for, let's see, for the K-9 unit. We had some appropriations that went back into the theater demolition that was carried over from last year, I believe. And we also had a donation from Kiwanis for $7,000 for a sound system. So, that's why I say, these people need to be known about this. So, we requested motion for emergency legislation for these appropriations. Myers accepted, second from McKeever, and we recessed at 6:04. So, that's all I have there.
Thank you. Mr. Potter?
I have nothing to report today.
Mr. Spiegel?
No report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Traffic Commission?
Nothing of traffic commission.
Okay.
Sorry.
Mayor's report?
I'm ready for that.
Hi.
Got the mic on there. Council President has already mentioned about Dan's, the passing of Dan, and I was able to attend the funeral yesterday. And we had a nice contingent of firefighters there, paying, both retired and active, paying tribute. And the kids, the boys, did a beautiful job of eulogies. And Mr. Gurnett was with me, too, and I know he can attest the fact that Dan loved Ucires' hometown. I knew him a long time. He was a neighbor across Sandusky Avenue. We used to have rivalries, you know, between our neighborhoods, back, I guess, back when kids weren't playing video games, they didn't have anything to do except to challenge other streets to football games and baseball games and things. So, every time I saw Dan, he always reminded me of that, you know, that they always, Williams Street always won, and that's probably true. So, so, Dan will be missed. You know, from my office, I could see him walking just about every day, getting his newspaper downtown, and last couple of months, I haven't seen him. And so, you know, I know he, he'll be missed. He'll be missed. We thank you, Dan, for your service. Chuck Stone, since you brought up Chuck, Chuck was a friend of mine, too. I got to know him in the last few years, especially in working with him. And he, Chuck had a huge heart. Something about Chuck, he was, he just cared about people. The obituary, I hope you get a chance to read that, is actually a beautiful, beautiful obituary, and have a good testimony to the kind of guy that he was. So, his calling hours, I think, are Friday and then Saturday morning. So, you can check the obituaries there. Moving on, we still have a peek with the effects of the Omicron variant of COVID, and we've got some people up at City Hall still are dealing with it. So, you've all read the news, and I'm not telling you anything you don't know. If you haven't caught it yet, and you've been around people, chances are you're going to have it. So, just be careful, everyone, best you can. I thought the supervisor and the Streets Department did a fantastic job. I know they're out there working again today for snow removal. I know it was the first major snowfall of the season, and we are missing several retirees, plus Brian, who passed away last year. So, they were veterans of that crew. So, it takes them a little while to learn the routes and the ins and outs, but just want everyone to be patient. I think everything looks pretty good right now. Couple referrals. I just received the final rule for the American Rescue Plan Act, those expenditures. And I've been waiting for that. It just came in this week, and I'd like to discuss that Thursday night about how to spend those funds.
Finance.
We spent, yeah, finance and public lands and buildings. And just give some thoughts on that. We have half of it already in, the other half's coming in, is it May, Joyce?
I believe June or July.
Okay, okay. So, it'll be coming this soon. So, so, if we can refer that, and we'll talk about that Thursday evening, and then have a, we want to get a head start on the mill and pave for this year, 2022 project. And we want to refer that to finance and public lands and buildings. Is that right? Or did you want service? Okay, I'm sorry.
Service and finance.
I thought that was, I thought we corrected that.
No, I thought that was plating.
Yeah, service has been the tradit, right?
Doesn't plating do mill and pave for streets?
Service does.
Service?
Has, has been the time I've been on council.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
And one final thing, I think I want to congratulate everybody for coming back for your second meeting. Nobody was scared away, and so, that's a good sign. So, thank you. That's all tonight.
All right, thank you. Anything from the Safety Service Director?
No, he, he had the referrals on mill and pave. Yeah, nothing from Jeff.
Mr. Oliver?
Madam President?
Yes.
We need to vote to approve.
For those referrals?
Yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion to send the ARPA expenditures to finance and public lands.
Do I have a second?
I'll start you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll also move to send the 2022 mill and pave to finance and service.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are referred. Mr. Gurnett?
Thank you. So, there had been some questions about the designated outdoor refreshment application. I pulled the old one, revised that, and the mayor and I were going through to make sure it's sort of what he wants. I assume that he'll be signing that and submitting it to council. After that, council would have to publish, and then after the initial publication, within 30 to 60 days, they can either approve or reject that application. So, I have in that application, hopefully effective April 1st, that the downtown outdoor refreshment area would be a go, but obviously, that would be up to council to approve that application. And then once, if council approves that, then there's some dealing with the state liquor agency as well. But, so, that's sort of the status of that. There is a property out that the Crawford County Conservation League owned, which is Outlet Lot 590, which is behind one of the ponds out in the industrial park. It used to be owned by the Crawford County Conservation League. It was transferred to a private owner who's now trying to sell it, and the guy that wants to buy it, wants to be able to deer hunt pursuant to Besides Codified Ordinance 91905, hunting was permitted at that Outlet Lot 590 with the permission of the Crawford County Conservation League, in addition to a permit issued by the city, as the Crawford County Conservation League no longer owns that, and they're not going to be in the business of giving permission to hunt on land that they don't own. And that guy has been trying to figure out whether or not the city council or the city would allow him to bow hunt on his property. So, I would ask that that be referred to, I think, economic development for discussions concerning updating that legislation.
If, about the hunting, would go to health and safety?
Where, where is that land at?
It's on the, that one pond that they dug when they were doing the bypass. It's back behind that.
Okay.
So, the pond is included in it, but where he would hunt would be back behind that. And it's right on the northeast side of the city lot.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't know, health and safety or whatever. I would just ask for a referral for that. And I can get you a map of that, because I made a map, and then I didn't bring said map.
I'm trying to picture where it's at.
Yeah, me too. I can't, me too.
By the railroad tracks?
The railroad tracks are on the east side of it, the raised railroad.
East side of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, it's 12 acres, I think, off the top of my head. And then this, I don't know, but just something to think about, and I'll bring that stuff on Thursday for that committee. I talked to Officer Burzby, who's the officer in charge of our taxi cab regulations, and he indicated that what we currently have is sort of insufficient. So, I pulled it. The licensure requirements are passed back in 1943. The fees established back in 1943, so $15 for a taxi cab, an annual fee. And his point is, and if they don't comply with the code, I have no authority to impound their vehicles until they've met their inspections. I have no authority to do anything other than issue a minor misdemeanor citation, which is going to be a financial sanction, and they're going to continue driving and ignoring it anyways. So, I think, and I know that there's two or three taxi cab companies in Ucires, and I think it came about because one of the cabs was in the shop, so they just took the stickers off the one cab, put it on the different cab, and he's never had the opportunity to inspect that, and what do I do about that? So, something to look at. I don't know what council would want to do about that, but it seems like maybe since 1943, at least the fees could be updated, but anyways. So, I think that one would also go to health and safety. I would concur. Further, we have, obviously, as everybody knows, there's a lawsuit, an appeal against the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is pending, and then there's the lawsuit against the Ucires City Council, which is also pending. We will be responding to that post haste. I have 28 days to respond, so we're working on that. And then I submitted an application on this January 10th to annex my property, which is 1145 West Mansfield Street, into the city. It's contiguous with what used to be Heartland, now it's Pro-Medica. So, I'm asking council, I guess, to authorize me to hire an attorney to represent you guys. There's sort of an inherent conflict of interest, and I don't want any bad blood or anybody coming back and claiming some sort of ethical violation or some sort of self-dealing. I understand it's sort of, it is what it is, but I've reached out to a couple attorneys, and so I would just ask council to authorize me to hire an attorney, and that would come out of my outside legal fees budget, which has already been budgeted. Just by way of a timeline, because I filed on January 10th, you have, within 20 days, you have to adopt an ordinance or resolution stating services to be provided. So, by my count, that would be by January 31st, we would have to adopt an ordinance regarding services, and then by February 4th, we would have, council would have to either consent to the petition or object to the petition, and I think I said that, but that would be by February 4th. I also filed a letter indicating that I would like my property to be zoned in the R1 district, which is what Pro-Medica, Heartland, is in the residential suburban district. And if the 1157 point, the code about new annexation allows that the zoning designation to be in the services ordinance, which then kind of streamlines the process as opposed to bringing it in under the residential estates and then having to redesignate it. So, kill two birds with one stone. And unless you have questions, I have nothing else.
That would need to be referred to plating.
That would need to be referred to plating. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to, to refer to plating.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Schiffer?
Madam President, point of order. Can we go ahead and refer the rest of, or vote on the rest of his referrals?
I apologize, that was a, yes.
I'll move to send the taxi cab issue to health and safety.
I'll start you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll move to send the deer hunting issue to health and safety.
Second.
Who do you have? For the second. I'm sorry, who did you get for the second?
Give it to Brent.
Oh, Brent, okay.
I heard him first.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I'll move to send the DORA to economic development.
That has to be actually submitted first.
Oh, before we can?
I was just updating.
Gotcha.
Jeff will submit, the mayor will submit an application, and then we'll do that.
Withdrawn.
We've got it in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Anything else I missed? Ms. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President. I have no reports this evening, but I do have one referral. We need to refer the annual enterprise fund reimbursements to the general fund, and I will have a breakdown for you at Thursday's finance meeting.
I'll make the motion to refer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is referred. All right. You have the treasures report before you. The revenue tally to budget, as well as the treasures report. I have a motion, I'm sorry.
I, I think we have to accept and file the treasures report.
Yes, that's where I was going.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever, to accept and file the treasures report and tally to budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And it doesn't look like we have a report from the police chief or the fire chief. May I have a motion to accept the city officers' reports?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now is the time for visitor input regarding the reports, the standing committees and the special committees of the city officers. There being no one present, we will move on. For consideration of legislation for the first reading?
Authorizing and directing the Ucires Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Ucires, Ohio, to advertise for bids for leasing of approximately 6.3 acres of tillable land of the aggregate off of West Southern Avenue and the City of Ucires, located at the wastewater treatment plant on the southwest side of the property, PPN 08-0014800, period, 000, from April 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2025, covering 2022, 2023, and 2024 crop growing seasons, with all such land to be planted, excuse me, in crops and not placed in any government land, bank program, and permitted to lie fallow. Said leased acreage being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to enter into a lease therefore with the highest and best bidder reserving the right of the City of Ucires, except during the planting and growing season, to spread thereupon lime sludge hauled by it from wastewater treatment or water treatment plants and declaring an emergency.
For the record, can I have you state what the proposed ordinance number was on that one, please?
I'm sorry, yes. Ordinance number 2, 02-2022.
Thanks.
All right. Ordinance number 03-2022, authorizing and directing the Ucires Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Ucires, Ohio, to advertise for bids for the leasing of approximately 21.9 acres of tillable land in the aggregate in Liberty Township along State Route 98 East adjoining Outweight Reservoir, Reservoir Number 4, PPNs 29-0050260.000 and 29-0050293.000, from April 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2025, covering 2022, 2023, and 2024 crop growing seasons, with all such land to be planted in crops and not placed in any government land being programmed and permitted to lie fallow. Said leased acreage being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to enter into a lease therefore with the highest and best bidder reserving the right of the City of Ucires, except during the planting and growing season, to spread thereupon lime sludge hauled by it from the city wastewater treatment or water treatment plants, also reserving the right to terminate the lease or a portion of the lease during any non-growing season time period for the installation of a green or renewable energy program or test site and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 04-2022, authorizing and directing the Ucires Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Ucires, Ohio, to advertise for bids for the leasing of approximately 32.9 acres of tillable land in the aggregate in Ucires Township adjoining runways of the Port Ucires Crawford County Airport, part of PPN 09-0050067.000, 09-0050068.000 and 09-005, 09-0050069.000, from April 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2025, covering 2022, 2023, and 2024 crop growing seasons, with all such land to be planted in crops other than corn or other crops of subsimilar height and not placed in any government land bank program and permitted to lie fallow. Said leased acreage being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to enter, and to enter into a lease therefore with the, therefore with the highest and best bidder reserving the right of the City of Ucires, except during the planting and growing season, to spread thereupon lime sludge hauled by it from city wastewater treatment or water waste treatment plants and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 05-2022, authorizing and directing the Ucires Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Ucires, Ohio, to advertise for bids for the leasing of approximately 7.6 acres of tillable land in the aggregate in the Township of Liberty on Keys Road, located at the northeast corner of the Outweight Reservoir property, PPN 29-0007485.000, from April 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2025, covering 2022, 2023, and 2024 crop growing seasons, with all such land to be planted in crops and not placed in any government land being programmed and permitted to lie fallow. Said leased acreage being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to enter into a lease therefore with the highest and best bidder, reserving the right of the City of Ucires, except during the planting and growing season, to spread thereupon lime sludge hauled by it from the wastewater treatment or wa, or water treatment plants and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 06-22, authorizing and directing the Ucires Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Ucires, Ohio, to advertise for bids for the leasing of approximately 52 acres of tillable land in the aggregate in the City of Ucires, located in the Port Ucires Crawford County Airport adjacent to State Route 98 and the tracks north of auxiliary runway, PPN 09-0001446.000, 09-0001447.000, and 09-0050065, assuming that's supposed to be point zero zero. From April 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2025, covering 2022, 2023, and 2024 crop growing seasons, with all such land to be planted in crops other than corn or other crops of such similar height and not placed in any government land being programmed and permitted to lie fallow. Said leased acreage being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to enter into a lease therefore with the highest and best bidder, reserving the right of the City of Ucires, except during the planting and growing season, to spread thereupon lime sludge hauled by it from the wastewater treatment or water treatment plants and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 07-2022, amending and supplementing ordinance number 54-2021, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022, by appropriating from unappropriated general, unappropriated general funds, the sum of $2,540 to the capital outlet line item, was in the police department category, was in the program, I security, I dash, without one dash, security, I'm sorry. Catch that. Of persons and properties, subparagraph, furthermore appropriating from unappropriated airport coronavirus response grant funds, in the sum of $10,745.60 to the contractual services line item, was in the airport category, was in the airport coronavirus response grant, subparagraph, and finally appropriating from unappropriated ODNR theater demolition fines, the sum of $25,350.58 to the capital outlet line item, was in the landed building category, was in the ODNR theater demolition, subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. Okay. Resolution number 203, 20, 203-2022, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director of the City of Ucires, Ohio, to advertise for bids and to enter into contracts for the purchase of various materials and supplies and declaring an emergency. And resolution number 204-2022, the following resolution enacted by the City of Ucires of Crawford County, Ohio, herein after referred to as the city and the matter of the stated described project and declaring an emergency.
Do we have any public participation to discuss legislation for the first time? There being none, we'll move on. The committee report on pending legislation, proposed ordinance 2, 02, sorry, dash 2022, advertised for bid for leasing 6.3 acres, public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings favorable to ordinance 02-2022.
Proposed ordinance 03-2022, advertised for bid for leasing of 21.9 acres, public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings favorable for proposed ordinance 03-2022.
Proposed ordinance 04-2022, advertised for bid for leasing of 32.9 acres, public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings is favorable to proposed ordinance 04-2022.
Proposed ordinance 05-2022, advertised for bid for leasing 7.6 acres, public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings favorable, favorable to proposed ordinance 05-2022.
Proposed ordinance 06-2022, advertised bid for leasing of 52 acres, public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings is favorable to proposed ordinance 6-2022.
Proposed ordinance 07-2022, appropriations, finance?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 7-2022.
Proposed resolution 203-2022, service?
Service committees in favor, proposed resolution 203-2022.
For materials and supply bids. I apologize, I didn't read that.
Yep.
Proposed resolution 204-2022, consent agreement, public lands and buildings.
Public lands and buildings is favorable to proposed resolution 204-2022.
Further consideration on pending legislation, ordinance number 02-2022, for the second and third reading of the proposed ordinance 02-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with the readings of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Okay, sorry. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 02-2022?
So moved. Second.
Who seconded that, I'm sorry?
I did.
Mr. Spiegel. And who's the first? No, Mr. Wireball.
All right, Wireball?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2, 02-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance 03-2022, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 03-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with the readings of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved.
McKeever was first, correct?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 03-2022?
So moved.
And that was Wireball, I'm so sorry, guys.
Yes.
That's okay. You're fine.
I have thrown out the question. All right. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yeah.
Sherick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 03-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance number 04-2022, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 04-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with the readings of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 04-2022?
So moved.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick? Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 04-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance number 05-2022, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 05-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with the readings of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 05-2022?
So moved. Second.
Hever?
Yes.
Myers, or I'm sorry, not Myers, McKeever, Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 05-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance number 06-2022, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 06-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with the readings of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, but I.
So moved. He was second.
Okay, thank you. Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick just walked in, so should I wait or?
Would you, would you like to join us?
Yeah.
For an official vote?
Sorry. Sherick, how does that work?
Just making note that she joined us at that point.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 06-2022?
So moved.
Okay, McKeever?
Yes.
Sherick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Ordinance number 06-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance number 07-2022, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 07-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with the readings of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 07-2022?
So moved.
Second. That was Spiegel, Sherick.
Okay. Spiegel?
Yes.
Sherick?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Ordinance number 07-2022 is duly adopted. Resolution 203-2022, for the second and third readings of proposed resolution 203-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with the readings of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I heard two people at once. Who did second?
Potter.
Potter was first.
McKeever was second.
Potter was first, and McKeever was second, okay. Okay. Potter?
Yes.
McKeever?